Okay, good evening. Good evening in Zootide. Today is October 24th, 2024, and the time is now 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of the ISD 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to those in the audience here this evening and anybody watching at home. Director Connor, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Removed by Director Webb, seconded by Director Connor. Is there any discussion on this matter? Seeing none, are all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed would say nay. The motion carries unanimously. The first item on our agenda will be to receive the World's Best Workforce 2023-24 Achievement and Integration Progress Report from Amina Oftedal, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and Isa Buchanan, Director of Educational Equity. Welcome.
Thank you, Director Miller, Dr. Belmont, members of the board. Thank you for giving Director Buchanan and myself the opportunity to share the annual report of the 2023-24 World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration Plans. This evening, I will provide an overview of the purpose and intent of both Minnesota State's World Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration Programs, and then discuss the results of each goal for this past year. And then Director Buchanan will be able to take some time to share the strategies and activities supported by the District Achievement and Integration Plan. This report combines the progress of two programs, the World's Best Workforce and State Achievement and Integration. First is the World's Best Workforce. This state guidance is for all school districts and was updated in the 2023 Legislative Session to address the redundancy in goals that came forward with the adoption of the REED Act legislation. So the reading goal has been shifted out of the World's Best Workforce and moved into the REED Act and Local Literacy Report, which you will receive at a later date. However, it has been replaced with the more future readiness goal of lifelong learners. The new state guide is rebranded as the Comprehensive Achievement and Career Readiness and will be reported for the 2024-25 school year.
And I'll just speak a little bit on achievement and integration. So Chair Miller, Dr. Belmont, Assistant Superintendent, and members of the board, the Achievement and Integration Program promotes racial and economic integration across our district to enhance student achievement and address disparities across our diverse student populations. So District 191 qualifies for this program due to its designation as a racially isolated district and our adjacency to the Lakeville District 194 that we partner with.
As we reflect on the goals and the results of the past year, one area that serves as an indicator for early student success is the kindergarten readiness for literacy and reading. Incoming kindergarteners are assessed individually each fall to determine the level of readiness for kindergarten in many areas. The development of language and early literacy skills, however, is a key one for us. It was our goal that 50% of our incoming kindergarteners demonstrate those skills upon entry to kindergarten. We did see a flat result from the prior year, 42% in 2023, and that's what we saw this fall again in 2024. Those are the percentage of students that are meeting the kindergarten benchmark as they walk into the door first time. Because kindergarteners come to us from many different experiences, we are interested in knowing the impact on young learners who participate in our own district's preschool. Forty-seven percent of students who participated in the 191 preschool met the benchmark, the fall benchmark, over the 36% of their peers who came from other experiences. We look to continue to strengthen that PK-to-K alignment, especially around literacy with our further programming and professional development. The achievement integration goals have us looking at specific groups of students who have historically been underserved, and we see what impact the district programming has had on their achievement. While the results of BIPOC students overall did not meet our goal of 41% of meeting the benchmark, the students who participated in the 191 preschool programming far exceeded that percentage and that of their overall group, with 62% of BIPOC students meeting the kindergarten readiness goal in literacy after engaging and participating in our VPK program. Similar results positively were seen for our Latino students, with only 17% of students overall meeting that benchmark walking in the door, but 60% of our Latino and Hispanic students who participated in our 191 preschool met that fall benchmark. The Goals for Native Children was not met, with only two children in the district VPK program, 11 Native students overall. I think this really speaks to the power of our district program and how it is truly trying to address the needs of students and offer them that amazing learning experience to give them the tools that they need so that when they walk in the door on that first day of kindergarten, we are seeing them as being literacy-ready. The second goal for the World's Best Workforce is to close performance gaps. The state of Minnesota this year, using the indicator of the Reading MCA for students in grades three through 11, did not see any significant shift in their disparity of reading achievement as measured by the state reading tests. District-wide, however, across the grades three through 11, there was a continued growth in our reading achievement gap. Looking at grades three through 11 reading on the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments by student groups showed us in this disaggregation, the 191 comparison with their peers across the state by race and ethnicity, as well as special populations group. We continue to perform below the state, however, we are seeing continued growth in many of those areas. One of the other indicators is college and career readiness. One indicator that we use for that is our average ACT composite score for all of our grade 11 students. At the time of this report, we do not have the 2024 results. Those usually come out in late October, so they don't come out in time always for this particular report. But we do know that the trend over the last couple of years has kind of kept us in the same spot, and so we haven't seen significant growth. And then comparatively, we have not seen any growth across the state as well. Another one of our indicators, and this is the one goal that is supported by our Achievement Integration Program, is to really reduce the disproportionate enrollment in rigorous coursework between our white students and our students of color. Our goal was to reduce from 13% last year to 8%, two years ago to 8% for last year. We did not see a change or shift and remained at 13% being the disproportionality between those groups in rigorous courses. And for our purposes, the definition of rigorous coursework are courses that carry college credit. The final goal is looking at four-year graduation rates. While the state four-year graduation rate remained flat at 84%, there was some slight decreases in the four-year graduation rates for the district overall and at BHS specifically. Burnsville Alternative High School, however, saw the greatest increase with a 9% increase in their four-year graduation rate. When examining the four-year graduation rates for some of our BIPOC learners at BHS, we can see that we saw the decrease for students overall. However, our goal for our Latino students was 70%. We didn't meet that goal with 61%, but we did see some growth and recovery in the graduation rates for our Latino students. Our Native students, we did not meet our goal of 72%, but remained flat with our goal of 50%. Using the data from the World's Best Workforce and Achievement Integration and multiple other data sources, we develop our programming for curriculum, instruction, and professional development, and those plans are currently in progress. We plan to utilize each of the scheduled Student Performance and Achievement, or SPA reports, scheduled this year to provide the board with a more comprehensive view of programming and strategies and the implementation and their impacts in each of these more specific areas. Each SPA report will focus on specific measures from the board's strategic dashboard. In January, you'll see a literacy update focused on the pre-K through 8 curriculum instruction and professional development. In March, we'll look at addressing disparities in some of those underperforming and disparate performances, sharing academic performance and activities we're using to address those. In April will be the college and career readiness presentation, looking more closely at the most current graduation, four-year graduation rates, and the activities that we are doing currently at our high school and at BOSS to support those activities and that programming, and looking at our rigorous course enrollment updates and including our most recent updates for our ACT results. And then in June, we'll do our final report on the REED Act and our local literacy plan for the year with a wrap-up of our literacy work that's being done and the student results for the end of the year. Those are some things for you to look forward to, as this is simply an overview and progress update for last year. But I think it's really important for us to take a really closer look, and I'm excited for the opportunity for you to have another look at the achievement and integration-specific strategies.
Yes, and so you can see on the slide that we have four strategies, and so the first two we will talk about here. And so Strategy Number One is our advancement via individual determination, or AVID, as you may have heard it before. But it really focuses on that college and career readiness, and there are a lot of tools to help us implement and ensure we are offering rigorous school-wide instruction and promoting equity and access to learning opportunities. Some examples of our efforts from this past year include ongoing professional development for AVID teachers and staff, the expansion of our AVID elective sections at secondary sites to support broader student participation. Eagle Ridge Middle School is also currently still working to achieve the AVID Demonstration School status, and so they've had visits from people from the AVID organization. And then we also continued our collaboration with Lakeville ISD 194 with our AVID Summer Program. We do have plans to sort of relook at and redesign some of that work with the Summer Bridge Program, because our partner district is no longer using AVID. And so this year, we'll be working with them to come up with some other creative things that we can do to increase, you know, our student engagement with some summer programming. The other, I guess the other piece that I will add to this piece about AVID is that we really are trying to embed our professional development so that we're layering our culturally proficient school system work with our English learner instructional practices along with AVID, so that we're just applying all of those things together all at once. And so I know at our middle schools last year, in our high school, we really were intentional about, I believe it's the big three at the high school, they have some AVID strategies they focus on, and at the middle schools, I believe it's the AVID six now. And so really layering in some of those things, like having visuals and using sentence stems is part of that. For Strategy Two, the family and community partnerships, we have our social workers and cultural liaisons are funded out of our Achievement and Integration dollars, and so they really work closely with families to connect them with state resources and supporting student well-being and academic success. Some of those areas included strengthening our family and school partnerships and improving the social-emotional skills and supports that we provide at our school sites, as well as supporting parents and caregivers in preparing for that preschool age, as you heard before, and just ensuring that we're partnering with our families to just help build bridges if they're needed to help students know that they're ready for that, for academic readiness, and then also just in getting them enrolled in our programming before kindergarten so that it's an easier sort of on-ramp, because they're already familiar with our systems. And then finally, ensuring that our families understand the requirements for the high school graduation and encouraging participation in rigorous coursework at the secondary level. And so last year, we did have some family nights where we were able to support families who wanted to come in and learn more about what did their students need to meet those benchmarks, and then also having interpreters and translators available to make sure that we're, you know, able to connect with our family groups who really, you know, want the information as well. The next slide focuses on Strategy Three, which is Indigenous Student and Family Engagement. And as you know, this past year, we've been guided by, guided with some recommendations for our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, and just continuing to prioritize staff development and curriculum enhancements to ensure that we're accurately representing Indigenous peoples. And some of those initiatives included continuing with our monthly meetings with our APAC, also participating in the South Metro Indian Education Committee programs. So we still continue to partner with them with the South of the River Powwow and monthly drum and dance and craft activities. And then also, last year, we applied for the Dream Catcher Program to enhance the way we're looking at cultural and social-emotional supports for Indigenous students and really targeting improving attendance and learning more about students and the different things that they may need to reduce the number of American Indian students who are, you know, get into that special education referral process. And then Strategy Four is culturally proficient school systems. And I'm kind of excited today to share that our work continues. I'm taking the 10-day certification for CPSS myself right now, and so one of the things that we're realizing is that, I think it was 2014 when the district created their very first four-year plan, and so within 10 years, participating in this training with different people from across the United States, they seem in awe of the work we're doing, even though at times I think we're harder on ourselves about what we still need to do. And so some of that work included integrating the AVID strategies with English learner supports and culturally responsive practices to ensure high academic standards aligned with the benchmarks, and some of that work we've continued into this year as well. And then continuing to have training for our staff and having culturally responsive instruction, as well as developing equitable school climates through targeted professional development at staff and all levels. And so last year, I did work with nutrition services and media specialists to, you know, have some touchpoints with our CPSS work, and then also work that we did together, you know, with you as the board. And then alignment and instructional feedback and multi-tiered systems of support to meet the diverse needs of students, and I think you've heard about some of these indicators. But again, we're trying to layer all of these approaches so they don't seem like separate things, but they are all things that build a thicker thread of our support for students in our district.
Okay, thank you. Board members have any comments or questions?
Excuse me. So I know you no longer have AVID for sixth graders. Does it start at seventh now or eighth?
We do have AVID for sixth grade.
You do now? Oh, okay. I thought you had discontinued the sixth graders. Okay. Okay. And then the other question on Slide 11 for the Virtual Academy, the percentages, I was just wondering, do you have an idea why there was such a drop in the Virtual Academy for students? I was just a little surprised at that.
Yeah. It was a significant drop. There were a couple of factors that were included in there. One is really taking a look at the number of students who are completing their credits as they are initially moving into the Virtual Academy at the high school. It's a shift in the model. It moves to a full asynchronous, so there is no live session for the students, and many times, as freshmen, they find that to be almost too freeing, and there tends to be an adjustment. And so we see a really significant shift, even more than we do for the students who are meeting face-to-face, in the high level of failure rates as freshmen. I do know that in conversations with Principal Ron, she really has targeted that as one of the areas of improvement, and I'm sure that when she shares her report, just really bringing some of those wraparound services that she has for her face-to-face students at BOSS to her Virtual Academy staff as well. And so they've been implementing a few different strategies, including some weekly check-ins and some other types of things that they've tried to embed within there to build more connection with students, to be more proactive to avoid those particular failures.
More structure. Okay, good. Sounds good.
Other questions? Other questions or comments?
Thank you, Chair Miller. Thank you for this report. I always appreciate seeing you both. To dovetail on Director Connor's question and staying on the same slide, and I guess I want to preface this, because of course, there's more to learning and education than test results, right? We need to think about the whole student and their wellness. And I appreciated, Amina, your comment about the different experiences that students bring, starting in, you know, pre-K and kindergarten. At the same time, by the time they reach the high school, right, for the, many students have been with us for a while. There are some that come and go. And at the end of the day, our job is to make sure that as many of our students graduate as possible, but we're not seeing an increase, we're seeing a decrease, and we have roughly, conservatively, $160,000 invested in credit recovery. Why the disconnect?
I think we're seeing some of the payoff for the credit recovery in our BOSS students. And so I believe that that's one of the indicators where we're seeing more and more of the students who are stepping into BOSS to graduate are meeting that four-year expectation, whereas before, we didn't see that. And I think credit recovery plays a huge component into that in providing that support for those students. So I think that's where you might see some of the results. I think we're also really taking a close look, and I think as the high school begins to report and share some of the other things, some of the really key things that we've been focusing on that we may not have seen come to light in last year is, because remember, this is a lagging indicator. These are not students who graduated last year. These are kids who graduated the year before.
Yeah.
So that might be something, too, is that we're not seeing the results of work that we did last year and the results of works that we're doing this year with the ongoing ninth-grade academy and the continued supports that we're providing for students at that weak point of ninth grade, which we see as a high failure space, and so really providing that extra structure and support for those students. For seeing the really powerful work that middle school and high school have done collaboratively for that transition from eighth grade to ninth grade as well, and seeing what some of those results will look like, and also looking at some of the system pieces that we've been putting into place with our new data and assessment tool, which is EduClimber, which is developing early warning systems and dashboards for both eighth grade and for ninth and 10th grade. And so really looking at the results of some of those, because we knew these results last spring, and so what we're doing now and what we've done over the course of the summer is in response to this particular data, saying, wait a minute, we're not seeing the growth, and we're seeing some lagging indicators that show that we have some tremendous needs. And so I would posit that because it is a lagging indicator, we don't always see those results, and so I would hope that we would see some of those things. I think the transition piece is going to be a big piece, and I know that Dr. Belmont has really led some of that work as well, but really engaging our families and students and staff in that eighth grade to ninth grade transition and making that a little bit more seamless for students.
And I remain hopeful. I love hearing everything that we are working on to try to catch, you know, catch them as they move through our system. It's just, it can be hard to see the results, and I know that, I'm sure you both feel the same way. So thank you. And just, you know, putting a pin in the grad report that you're going to bring forward, high expectations for information in that report, too.
Yes.
Another question, the Dream Catcher Project. Can you speak to that a little bit more?
And so the Dream Catcher Project is, it's a program, it doesn't, we don't receive funding for it, but it basically has been put in place through the Minnesota Department of Education to help us look at the types of supports and maybe interventions we have for our Indigenous students. And so it brings in a culture piece, it brings in knowing more about trauma, and so right now, we have a team of staff from our district, and then we are also partnering with some of our sites, to be pilot sites, where we'll develop tools, or not develop, but find tools that are already out there that we can use so that when a site has some concerns about the academic or behavior performance of Indigenous students, that they'll have additional resources and staff that they can invite to those conversations. Because, and you've probably heard this in the past, we've had an over-identification of our Indigenous students, just because sometimes we're not aware of some of the culture and trauma pieces that we should be aware of, and so we're working to just add in those pieces. And so we applied for the program last year, and we got in, and so this fall, our team has already met, I think, three times, two or three times, to just start to build our program, and some of what we're doing is just identifying sites that we want to target along with the attendance work that we're doing, so that we're really trying to be reasonable and practical, because we only have the two Indigenous staff, and then there is one other Indigenous staff person there, and so we're trying to use those people as assets to bring to teams who are having those discussions. And it's going to be ongoing work all this year and into future years, but it also connects us to a network of people who are intentionally focusing on this area, and so that we're regularly able to access, like, information and additional support as we're just looking at the things we could do to support student needs.
And building that, building that strength into what staff is doing, whether they're classroom or not, is, it's important, because we can't simply rely on our multilingual staff, our liaisons, translators, you know, we all have to understand that.
And even though we're targeting some schools for more of the in-person help, that doesn't mean, we do have plans. Like, when our team was meeting, we were talking about the tiers of support, like, what are things we could give to all sites so they know if you have Indigenous students, what are things you can be proactively doing to make, you know, their connection to school stronger? And then the same thing for tier two and tier three, because we want to make sure that we're looking at the range of needs and not waiting for tier two and tier three to start to respond, but that we're proactively sharing the information that we find with all sites, but again, targeting the people support that we have to really go deeper with some of that practice, and then sharing that out with school leaders, because we have, like, they're aware of this at our instructional leadership meetings, you know, that this is work that we're doing, and so we'll just continue to, like, learn more and... And I just read a quote, "That knowledge is power, but knowledge that's shared is even more powerful." So.
And one final comment. You know, it was really with mixed emotions that I saw the, the benchmark data again, right? That we're seeing growth among, among certain groups of students and not seeing growth in other groups. And, and yet, you know, BIPOC was at 62%, but overall, we were at 37%. And that 37% is, is really tough. So I just have to think about the fact that, to your point, ICSS has been here for such a long time and it's from the board all the way down. And we're just trusting in, in the work that you guys are doing. So thank you.
Initial questions?
Back to the one chart that had the graduation by four years. Just curious, we had a goal of 88% and the result was 82. Is that only reflective of Burnsville High School? Or is the 88% goal like the entire district realizing Virtual Academy has students that will, will graduate in four years? And then another question would be the alternative high school results. Are those students are the ones that graduated in four years out of the total pool of students we serve in the, at BOSS?
So, two questions. So the first question is, our world's best workforce goal is for Burnsville High School?
Only.
So it's four-year graduation rate at Burnsville High School. Our goal was 88%. Our result was 82%. So that, that's our world's best workforce goal. And I like to show the district number as well as the individual schools too. Your second question about BOSS, all of the students at BOSS, this is the number that reflects out of all the students at BOSS, those that graduated at, on time with their four-year goal.
With four-year goal, yeah, yeah. Because I was going to ask about best, because they graduate too.
Right. But they don't graduate with their four-year goal. They always graduate with five or six-year goals. And that can be something, I haven't traditionally reported the best graduation rates, but I certainly can include that in the graduation rate data because I think the five and six-year graduation data is really important. Because one of the other indicators that I also share at that report is the number of students who graduate versus the number of students who continue. So these are students who don't meet their four-year goal, but they are still committed to completing their graduation. And, and whether they do that through best or whether they do that through BOSS or other means, they're, they still have made that commitment to enroll and continue on.
Right. And I appreciate that. And then also realizing that they, well, you know, many end with a diploma.
They absolutely will end with a diploma.
In four years, they might, and they still have a diploma.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Thanks.
Additional questions or comments? I had one on the strategy slides, strategy number one. This is just my memory and anecdotal, but it feels like I've seen Eagle Ridge working towards an Avid demonstration status a couple of different times here. Can we get a little bit more concrete perspective on when that, expect that to happen?
And so there are different levels to the, the CCI or the tools that you use to get to this status. And so I believe they go through the different cycles with the Avid, the Avid site coordinator, you know, and work through the, the visits with the school. And so last year, there were visits with Avid staff coming to Eagle Ridge. However, I do think it's a cycle approach where they come and look for things and then they come back and look for things. And so I'd have to check in with the school to give you more specifics or...
Yeah, so it would have been to, last year, at the beginning of last year, that the school would have declared their intention to move toward demonstration status. And so as Director Buchanan has said, that put them on that cycle for that more intensive evaluation. So they would have had to declare that process. And then Avid would have brought in additional evaluators and, and technical assistance to help them to get to that. The idea is, is that when they complete their CCI evaluation in the spring, that they will have met all of the criteria. If they haven't, then they could, they can continue on. But the idea is it's a kind of a two-year cycle where you declare and then at the end of the second year, you should be able to meet that status.
Okay. I know we have had a number of schools go through different Avid processes, so I might be crossing my menwaters a little bit.
Well, and not to be confused with the fact that Nicollet Middle School, Nicollet Middle School last year renewed their demonstration status. So sometimes the, that they had, they already had the status and then they did a one-year renewal.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll receive a report from Gideon Pond Elementary School and Nicollet Middle School. Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent. Principals Dr. Salma Hussain and Dr. Carolyn Alston Elston will start things off and will introduce their guests, helping to share information about each school. Welcome everyone.
Thank you Chair Miller and members of the board. This is year three of our school reports. This year, you'll find slightly, or some things the same and some things new. For example, they're once again principal facilitated. We're having pairs or triads of schools present at the same time. Some of the things that are different are, there's, we're going to do slightly different configurations than in the past. Like, for example, tonight you'll see multiple ages represented at the same time. And then we also are having configurations paired for various reasons, some geography, some other. Also, you'll notice on the, on the slideshow on the screen that the essential elements of cultural proficiency are highlighted through our presentations this year. We'll have five different presentations and each one featuring one of our essential elements of CPSS. So tonight, for example, our principals and their teams will be highlighting examples in their school communities around assessing culture and what that looks like in action. So, and the board, I believe, knows that October is National Principals Month. So you have two of the very best in front of you tonight. Dr. Salma Hussain and Dr. Carolyn Alston Chintian. And they are, they have brought members of their community. So handing the mic to you two.
Thank you. Good evening Chair Miller, Dr. Belmont and members of the board. I am honored to share our Gideon Pond story tonight. At Gideon Pond, every student, staff and parent is valued and welcome. We take pride in our culture of love and community, which I will be able to share more about in a few minutes.
And good evening Chair Miller and Dr. Belmont and the rest of the board. I'm also very excited to be here. I'm really excited about the work that we've been doing at Nicollet for the past couple of years. And I'm excited to showcase it as well. I think you will also see us highlighting a lot of the inclusivity work that we're doing as well as highlighting the caring community aspect of the work and the academic work that we're doing to ensure that all of our students are getting their needs met. So I have a few students here with me, I have a few staff members, and we're really excited to present on everything that we're doing to support our students.
While they're kind of preparing, I'd also mention to the board that, and I know you know this, but just naming it, the Gideon Pond is an exclusive student provider to Nicollet Middle School. So they have that connection.
Thank you. I would like to welcome Molly Lynch and Megan Gower Claus to join me up to present our Gideon Pond story. And as they are joining us, I want to highlight that the two members that are joining me are two of our most dedicated staff members at Gideon Pond and all of our staff are quite dedicated. Molly Lynch has taught at Gideon Pond for 28 years. The secret to our culture of excellence are really the staff. And Megan has joined us in the last two years as our Student Systems Leadership Specialist. She is phenomenal at looking at our systems of student support, providing feedback and supporting our staff to do right for our students with integrity and love. You will get to see a video of our students singing, which will show you that our students are committed to diversity and about learning about different cultures. Tonight's presentation is about assessing culture. And I hope that you can see that through the joy and love that our students will show in the video on our first slide.
You can feel free to advance it.
Request access.
So the title of this slide is "Celebrating Culture Through Music," music pathway video. I want you all to know that everything we do at Gideon Pond Elementary is connected to creating pathways for our students. Our music teacher, Ms. Becca Buck, which I should mention, was a finalist for Teacher of the Year last year. Had the opportunity to go to Ghana and she was able to meet one of our students in Ghana. And she learned this song and brought it back to our community and our students have embraced it just this morning. I'm not making this up. This morning at parent drop-off, a mom showed me a video of her first grader. She said she just woke up Ms. Salma and just started singing this jo, a song with so much joy. So at Gideon Pond Elementary, I want you all to know that community means everyone. We work really, really hard to honor and value everyone. And what makes us extra special are our dedicated staff, our teachers, our support staff, our parents and our community members who truly believe in the work that we do and play an important role in contributing to that success. We are going to share a story of a phenomenal teacher at Gideon Pond Elementary who was a student at Gideon Pond and is now a teacher. And Ms. Lynch will share that story with us.
These are the words from Andrea Tredo, who is the teacher pictured at, as a current third grade teacher and as a third grader at Gideon Pond. My name is Andrea Tredo and I am happy to share my story with you tonight. I began my educational journey in kindergarten at Gideon Pond in the fall of 1993. Walking into my first day of school, I instantly felt loved and welcomed and like I belonged. By third grade, I loved school so much that I decided I wanted to be a teacher when I grew up. Since that day, I never wavered in my desire to teach and I took every opportunity to get myself, myself one step closer to that goal. In middle school and high school, I continued to stay connected to Gideon Pond by volunteering there throughout the year. My parents were very involved with the PTO since my younger siblings still attended school there, which led me to help at many school functions, including having to dress up as Clifford multiple years for the school book fair. And I have to say, I do remember that. In high school, I also joined the task leadership group, which was aimed at getting high school kids that were interested in teaching into the elementary schools. Through this program, I volunteered my time to help teachers and tutor students at Gideon Pond weekly. After high school, I went to Gustavus Adolphus College and worked hard in my studies to get my degree in elementary education. My first practicum experience was completed over a J-term and was spent shadowing and teaching with third, in third grade with Laura McNaughton at Gideon Pond. The summer after I graduated with honors, I was hired to teach sixth grade at Vista View. Due to budget cuts, I was let go and a month later was hired back at my home base, Gideon Pond, where I have taught ever since. As I'm hoping you can see, Gideon Pond has been an integral part of my life since I was six years old. The staff and community have been like family to me and I made Gideon Pond truly feel like home. Each year, I start the year by getting to know my students and teaching them about myself. I always tell them that I literally sat where they sit and walked the journey many of them will walk throughout their K-12 education. It is amazing watching their eyes light up as they envision themselves one day leading their own class in their school. My goal each and every day is to ensure that my students experience that same sense of belonging and connectedness that I have felt since day one at Gideon Pond. At Gideon Pond, we've had a saying for years, "Once a Pond kid, always a Pond kid." Meaning that as soon as you come to Gideon Pond, you are loved and cared for as part of our school community and that doesn't end when you leave our school. I am living proof that this statement is true. And it's a little tough to read this without tearing up just a bit.
Thank you so much Molly. Our next slide talks about how as a school community, we, we work really intentionally to affirm culture and foster communication. And through that collaboration, we are able to create a path to success for all of our students. At Gideon Pond Elementary, we have a mission. Our mission is really, we believe in relationships and relationships as being the foundation of our school. We strive every day to create a positive, predictable learning community that supports all of our students academically, socially and emotionally. We achieve this by affirming all culture, fostering communication and partnership, and ensuring safety for everyone. Each student, future-ready, community-strong. At Gideon Pond, we truly embody the core values of our district, which you all know, caring community, cultural proficiency, future readiness, inclusive partnership, student agency. These values guide our actions and decisions as we work together for the benefit of all. Just today, we had Hinda Abdi, who graduated from Gideon Pond Elementary 22 years ago, I believe. And she came and was able to connect with a teacher who inspired her, Dan King, who is still teaching at Gideon Pond Elementary. So our community ties are really strong. Our students who graduate from Gideon Pond continue to make a difference in our community. We also want to continue and share with you all all of the ways in which we are intentional about building partnership and making sure that every student at Gideon Pond is successful. We really are a community school who strive to lead with love in everything that we do. We are committed to being caring and supportive. We do regular communication with our families. We communicate, communicate, communicate because we know that through communication, we can meet those high expectations that we set for our students through the supportive relationships that we have fostered with family. We really believe that conferences are important. We just had conferences this, last week and we had 95% of our families attended conferences. And again, all of our families have daily communications, weekly communications through the newsletter Seesaw. And we are always calling with positive phone calls as well as phone calls that allow us to partner on better supporting our students. Parent involvement is incredible at Gideon Pond Elementary. We have many families, parents who are also staff, including myself. I truly believe in the work that we are doing at Gideon Pond Elementary and I get to see it through my own two children who go to Gideon Pond and sometimes call me mommy, mommy principal, as my one first grader says. We believe in cultural projects. All of our classrooms affirm all cultures. Students are learning about themselves, they're learning about their classmates and we're teaching about respect. We have a phenomenal multicultural night each year, which you are all invited to. And it is ran by our parent teacher organization, volunteers who celebrate cultures. This past year, we had a whole family who were teaching the community about how to make Lefsa, I think it's called. And it was just so beautiful. It was at grand, it was a grandma, a granddad, a mom, a dad and their grandbabies who are students at Pond. And it was so adorable to see little Somali kids trying it for the first time and saying, oh, this is delicious. We do a weekly newsletter. We love to communicate and our parents are reading the newsletters. Just this Friday, we sent out a communication about a new student club that's starting at Pond and Computer Club. And by Monday, we had 27 students registered. So we are a school that's committed to communicating and providing opportunities for our students so they can be future-ready. Monthly PTO meetings are amazing opportunities where all parents are encouraged to come. And we also know that all parents do not always have access to come to a live meeting. So we also provide language-specific Google Meet, which offers me the opportunity to be home with my children and be a mom and be a principal and see other moms be in their homes. And we talk about school and we talk about any concerns that they have in a way that works for them. And we're so fortunate to have our cultural liaison, Marianne and Cynthia, who partner with us to make sure that our families who speak Spanish and Somali have the information to support their students in being successful as well. have the information to support their students in being successful as well.
All right. At Gideon Pond, we are learning to be future-ready. Our students have the expected course class offerings in literacy, math, science, and social studies. Our work is centered around culturally proficient practices. And we are also implementing the second step of social-emotional learning curriculum in all classrooms and integrating the culturally-affirming practices throughout the school day. We are also using research-based interventions in reading to support our students in their literacy needs. We have What I Need time. Groups are organized to match the level of student need. Students at or above grade level may meet in a small group a couple of times a week, while students who are below grade level may meet with an adult two to three times per day to help meet their needs and increase their reading level. In 2024, in the spring of this past school year, 60% of our students met or exceeded expectations on the MCA reading test. That would be grades three through five. So really something to celebrate at our school. We also have really seen great things from the Pathways programs, or Pathways Program. Elementary students last spring were able to experience a couple of field trips, one of them being the fifth-grade track meet, which brought together the students from all the elementaries together for a track meet at Burnsville High School. So much fun to watch them meet students from other buildings or maybe catch students that they went to school with at another building. They also, students also were able to go to orchestra halls, who are our fourth graders. And then, fifth graders had a variety of ways to learn about band instruments, including a trip to Burnsville High School to see a concert and then have a music specialist come and introduce them to band instruments. We also have a variety now this fall with our Pathways and Advanced Learning Specialist. We also have more things that are coming to our building, including a robot coding program and several other activities. They're just getting started, but look like they will be really fantastic for all of our students.
This is a slide of photos. We mentioned how at Gideon Pond Elementary, everyone, like, community means everyone. So we work really hard to affirm all culture, to let everyone know that they matter. And we know that representation matters. So through our, throughout our school, we have positive pictures and messages, letting students know that who they are matters, and we see them. We celebrate Black History Month. We celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. We celebrate all of our students. And we work to do better as we learn more about our diverse community.
And I think those photos are a really beautiful representation of how not only the building assesses for culture, but how we are ensuring that students and staff are accessing opportunities to invest in other cultures. And so, one example of that is our honoring of Indigenous history and culture and people every day, not just one day out of the month. But we have taken it upon ourselves to ensure that our land acknowledgement is a part of every presentation that we have at Gideon Pond. And something really unique and powerful about Pond is that during their PBIS, or whether it be a different event in our gym that brings the school community together, the intention to invite families into those spaces with us is pretty amazing. And families come, they feel welcome, they want to be a part of it. They want to take pictures with their student when they get the Student of the Month award. And so, we have, we have an audience too, right? To share the importance of where this land, who this land belongs to, and be able to do that when we participate in school-wide gatherings. We also have had lessons provided by teachers and incorporating age-appropriate ways in which we can truly educate regarding the Indigenous experience in a factual, developmentally-appropriate way. You know, we, as you can see in the picture, there's been opportunity to, as a staff, really collaborate and affirm and get creative. And that Orange Shirt Day was educational for, I think, a lot of staff, as well as an opportunity to educate our students and our families, right? Like, what's with the orange shirt, right? As we learned about the significance of that day of previous educational, the education that was not accessible to our Indigenous populations and the harm that was done, and that we are going to do better. I think when we think too about that continual reflection on how are we doing, right? We, we are learning who our students are. We are trying to configure opportunities that really affirm, validate, are excited about, and really celebrate who our community is. We need to take time to reflect on who we are as people and what we might need to think about differently in order to be who each one of our students needs us to be. And so during Workshop Week, during our professional development, we had the opportunity to have Anissa Haji, an educator, an author, a powerful creative, a parent herself. A Walk in My Shoes is what she presented, Empathy in Parenting and Education. And we spent time very powerfully, very emotionally, kind of digging into what were the most significant relationships we may have had or that we were missing in our own educational experiences, and how that may be the reality for some of our students and our responsibility to take that information, to grow from that, and to decide to do different and to be intentional about how we are connecting with our students. We have a wonderful community of staff who have taken it upon themselves from a grassroots initiative to create their own in-house equity team, right? It's a partnership of very passionate teachers and staff individuals who are continuously having courageous conversations with each other, but I think then really planning on making progress within our school community, figuring out, hey, you know, there was, there was some curriculum, and I know, we're going to presume positive intent, that that teacher wasn't aware that this might have been inaccurate information, right? You go and teachers pay teachers. We're accessing a lot of creative things out there. And so we have the ability to really hold ourselves accountable and in a caring community, really challenge ourselves to take responsibility and change things as we need to for the benefit of our families and our students. And so, that's been pretty, pretty unique at Gideon Pond this fall. And then when we think about really effectively partnering with love with our families and with our students, and Dr. Hussein really shared a lot about how we do that through communication and partnerships with families. Another opportunity that we have, and to kind of dovetail off of what you shared about, we make as many celebratory calls and always have positive things to say about students, right? And then there are students who may need additional support to access their education. And so with our multi-tiered systems of support through our Student Success Team and our Student-Teacher Assistance Team, we're really able to, as a school team, consider how to support students, but really bring it back to the family. We all have the same goal. All of our families love and care deeply for their children, and they want them to be successful. Where we might need to get creative is how we envision that success and then how we can marry those ideas in our educational system to make that happen and to achieve those goals. And so what you see on this slide is our working agreements on our visual agenda that we use in our SST and STAT meetings, really grounding us in the importance of confidentiality, in teamwork, and going to each other if concerns arise, as well as planning with a CPSS, trauma-sensitive, and student-centered mindset, right? And that involves partnership with families, learning about who they are, what's important to them, what do they perceive their student strengths are? Where do they think the challenges might be happening? And really being able to, to build interventions based on those partnerships and finding a lot of success when we were better together, so.
Last but not least, I want to close our presentation by reminding you all that at Gideon Pond Elementary, we truly strive to lead with love in everything that we do. And we really embody and embrace Dr. Maya Angelou's wisdom. In diversity, there is beauty and there is strength. We would love to gift you all little hearts that say Gideon Pond, because again, at our school, we are a school rooted in love and rooted in community. And we thank you for this opportunity to share our story. I will now turn it over to our Nicolet team to share their story as well.
Thank you. We're actually going to just take a brief break between the two schools here. We'll just give you just a few minutes, and we'll... Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Carolyn Alston-Chantyin, and I am the proud principal of Nicolet Middle School. Along with me, I have sixth-grade interventionist Nicole Pecodner. Sorry, excuse me, Michelle Pecodner. I also have with me Michelle Henderson, one of Nicolet Middle School's deans. And I have two students with me as well, a seventh-grade student and an eighth-grade student of Avid. We have James, and then we also have Frazier, excuse me. And so to open us up, before we get into the priorities that we have developed to really dive into ensuring our students are making progress and meeting the needs of all of our students as individuals, I want to highlight the fact that last year, when I started at Nicolet, I had the opportunity to speak to every single staff member at the time. I really wanted to learn from the community, about the community. And so in doing that, the couple of things that were highlighted were the fact that the school felt like a family. Everyone felt very connected to the school community. The teachers felt very connected to one another. They were able to lean on each other for support. So that was something that was very positive that was highlighted. And then there was something else that was highlighted in terms of a barrier to students really being able to engage in the learning that needed to happen, and that was feelings of safety. So today, our presentation will touch upon both of those pieces. But I did want to open us up with a brief student video that kind of highlights and emphasizes the fact that we are still a very caring community.
My name is Ketai, and what makes me feel like a part of a good community is that the teacher cares about me and my education, and they also have high expectations for me.
I'm a good teacher. I'm a good teacher. I'm a good teacher. I'm a good teacher.
I'm a good teacher. I'm a good teacher. I'm a good teacher. I'm a good teacher.
People are loving teachers.
I'm a good teacher. I'm a good teacher.
If you're part of a new community, whether it's my friends in the hallway or class, make sure you use your... Learn things or what I get to, what I teach to hear of.
And so that video is just to speak to, you know, when I entered, the teachers told me about how caring the community is, but clearly the students also are feeling that experience as well, which creates the space for us to dive deeply into the academic pieces and the priorities that I am about to name. So for this school year, we have prioritized three priorities. These are in alignment to our school improvement plan. The first priority that we have identified is to improve overall student achievement through targeted supports, intentional instructional practices, and training for staff. So more specifically, really zeroing in on Tier One instruction to meet that 80% of our student needs, but also being creative around making sure that we are meeting the needs of that additional Tier Two and Tier Three by creating intentional practices as far as intervention supports and building structures to make sure that teachers are supported in being able to meet those needs in the classroom environment. The next priority that we have identified is increasing the feeling of safety for students, families, and staff from progressing to Vision on the annual district climate survey. So we are taking some steps to gather additional feedback and to make sure that we do have dipsticks throughout the course of the year so that we're able to more readily address the needs that are arising. And lastly, adjusting communication, our communication approach between teachers, our staff, and parents to ensure all communication is ongoing, two-way, consistent, and proactive so that we're able to use that as a way to build relationships with our families as well, so that everyone feels welcomed, everyone knows that they have a voice, and so that we can also address and partner with our families to meet our student needs. And so first, I'm going to speak to our first, our first priority being improving overall achievement. And so these are the three main things that we have been focusing in on, being the collaboration, analysis of data, and teacher training and coaching. And so as far as collaboration, this year, we made a shift as far as how teachers are utilizing their team time. In the past years, what happened was teachers met as a grade-level team daily, and it was not broken up by content specifically. And so a shift that has happened this year is three days out of the five days per week, teachers meet with their content-level team. And so that gives the space for teachers to share practices that are working, talk through practices that may not be working, analyze student data, identify tasks that may not be rigorous enough and ramp them up, and kind of just do collaboration in regards to that so that we can support all of our learners with being future-ready. Another change is that with those content-specific teams, we have an administrator that is present in all of those meetings one time per week, with the idea that we're able to support our teachers in that space by being present one time per week in those core content data meetings, as well as kind of guide the work and provide them with various protocols and templates, exemplars to know exactly where students should be, to help analyze standard work, and to really meet the needs of the teacher. So ask them what it is that they need support with and figure out ways to support them in that sense so that they know that they're not alone in this work. And in those meetings as well, we do an analysis of data so that we do know what's going on and what is working in the classroom. That also allows for our teachers to plan and be responsive to what that data is telling us. And Michelle will speak a bit more to that when she speaks about the interventionist side of things. But I also just want to touch upon the teacher training and coaching. And so we're trying to be intentional about building structures around that piece as well, because we do have a very diverse population of learners. So with that being said, we have a very high multilingual learner population. And so next week, actually, at our, at our next staff meeting, we have biweekly staff meetings. Our ML team will be presenting on a practice that our other teachers can integrate into the classroom to support our ML learners. And so that's going to happen monthly with the idea that we are all responsible for the learning of all of our students. And so it just gives our teachers the... And so it just gives our teachers the knowledge base and the opportunity to try different practices to meet the needs of the diverse learners that we serve. So I'm gonna pass it to you, Michelle, to speak to the intervention side of things.
Okay, hi, I'm Michelle Pocodner. I'm new to Burnsville this year, but I'm not a new teacher. I've loved my time at Nicolet Middle School, so I just wanted to start off with that. And in Burnsville District, it's been a pleasure working here so far. I come from a different state and, you know, the way that we used data in that state in developing intervention programs had a conformity to it. So that way, those processes that we developed would be transferred to the next year and the next year so that way, we can really identify students that need extra support with equity, you know, and implement those interventions with fidelity. So what we've been doing or continue to do, this is a continuation at Nicolet Middle School, is look at different various data points as the kids are coming into middle school or going to the next grade level. Because each individual assessment can give us something specific about that student, whether they need more work with phonics influency, or they need more work with comprehension and grade-level standards. So something that is unique this year, though, is that we are creating an ELA intervention support. So this is where, you know, we take kids that have the foundational skills of reading and literacy, and we just try to up the rigor and the scaffolds and the support to make sure that they have access to that tier-one instruction. And so we are in these meetings with the teams, coming up with these standards that align with our instruction and these common assessments. And through that, we're able to see the scope and sequence of like the tier-one assessment and how we're enriching that. It's already really good, but we're enriching it. And so what's cool is then we can align our instruction with that greater goal and that greater vision of the instruction and the standards that we want these students to meet. And so essentially, it's creating a differentiated approach for intervention because there are students that need that intensive, research-based, explicit phonics instruction to help with phonics influency at the middle school level. But then there are students that have the phonics influency that need extra support with academic vocabulary, way, way questions on state tests or, or how to, you know, test-taking strategies. We don't decrease the rigor, we just increase the support.
Great, thank you. So at Nicolet this year, also, we really put a priority on student, staff, and family safety. And part of our emphasis this year, you may be aware, is that we restructured our core teacher classrooms. So we moved our eighth graders to our main floor. We have the seventh graders on our bottom floor, and we put the sixth graders upstairs. And this has really allowed us and the sixth graders to have a better transition from elementary to middle school. The teachers, and you'll hear that in the video in a bit, are just so pleased with this new, the new system. It's, it's really meeting the student needs. To align with that, we have the lockers placed outside of the classroom. So like on the seventh grade and the sixth grade, the lockers are outside of their advisory classroom so they don't have very far to go. And then as far as the eighth grade go, they're on the main floor. And as you're aware of our building, the lockers are for eighth graders are then throughout the building. And that prepares them for their transition into high school, making them a little more independent, which is really nice. So that has been really helpful. We also this year, which is really exciting for the sixth graders, we have the house model. And so that has been wonderful as well, which means we have three teams up on the sixth grade level. And we're, because we're piloting it. And so each team has about 100 students. And then those 100 students each have the same three or four core teachers. And this has allowed, allowed for great planning for the teachers to be able to plan, work together. Then they can also plan their interventions. They can do their, and the sixth grade also has a different schedule than our seventh and eighth graders. And so it allows them to have win time this year is what I need. And so that also allows for great, greater interventions being placed in on the sixth grade. So that's been a great addition to our, our school as well this year. The last thing is our consistent feedback. We are very purposeful in the feedback, like Dr. Alston said. We, after every PD session, there's PD that, or feedback that comes back from the staff. After every staff meeting, she has feedback surveys that come back from the staff. We, we look over those results. She gets, she's very intentional about talking at the next staff meeting about what those results said. She's intentional about making sure that, is it 85% that we reach for? 85% receive a four or five? That everybody understands what the message was, that was, or the purpose behind what we're learning in the PD or the staff meeting. So that's very good. And then we also, part of our, our SIP goal this year is that communication with families. We want them, our families, to make sure their students feel safe and communicated with. And so we have really amped up through that parent square and our communications going out more frequently and in their own languages, which is really nice. And then we also did a survey, have, we're, the, not only the district survey, but we give out our survey, we gave it out at conferences to see, just kind of a placeholder to kind of see like, how are we doing, how are families feeling about what's going on at Nicolet? And we've received a lot of great feedback about the changes that we've put into place.
All right, thank you, Michelle. So I am going to play this video about how staff are feeling about these changes that Michelle just spoke to.
I would say from a teacher perspective, it's definitely cut down on tardies because kids are closer to their classes so they're able to move more efficiently and quickly from class to class, which is awesome because they're able to get class started right away and get going on all of the learning.
I would say that the school climate this year has been relatively different compared to the other years previously that I've been here at Nicolet. I just see like the transition is a lot smoother for sixth graders. Having a home on the floor is just like a smoother transition from that, you know, kind of elementary school to now going into the middle school. So it's just super nice to kind of like get to know all the faces at one time and just create that whole community for sure.
It has changed some quite positive, actually. It made a smoother transition. Our kids are able to manage, to navigate the problem building. It allows them to get to class earlier and on time because of the, because it's a nice house model and kids are not so worried about having a whole student body transitioning at the same time. And having them housed on the very top floor has made it less intimidating, I'd say, if I was a sixth grader coming into a new building, being able to have your own space away from the seven acres and made it ease the anxiety of, of peers and everyone else. End of.
I see that students now are getting to class on time, showered up, and really normal behaviors. So I'm sure it's still a lot of silly behaviors and kids just run around and whatnot, but it's been pretty calm this year with the great changes on the floor. So everybody gets to see their peers and they don't get influenced by it, I see that.
The floor change has been made, the sixth grade floor is so calm. We only have a few students who are like raised up here. So the floor itself is just very calm. The expectations are very clear because the sixth grade team is together discussing those. So it's really just made this a more, just a better learning environment for all students. The house model makes it so much easier for us to be all on the same page about students. Once we're trying to meet together, we can meet as a house and specifically talk and plan interventions and read our students' needs. Whereas when we were a big team and students would have me and random other teachers, it was really hard for us to get all those people together to meet and all be on the same page. It's so much easier to do that and really meet our kids where they're at and support them and learn who they are. We just have, working with one close team that really works well together.
Real quick, I'll just address, you heard on the interruption where it said "all in the hall." And that simply is, we are very big on active supervision. We take it very seriously. We want as many people in the hallway during transitions. So the "all in the hall" call is for when lunch dismissal is done. Jay is the admin in the lunchroom at that time, or sorry, Mr. Lepper. And he radio calls and then we, he makes sure all the adults that are available to go out in the hall and make sure that we help ease those sixth graders back upstairs. So it's just for active supervision purposes.
Thank you, Michelle. And so the next priority that I want to speak to is our goal of improving communication, our communication approach school-wide. So Michelle spoke a bit about the surveys that we have been giving out. And so what we have done is we've pretty much mirrored a section of the climate survey that the district gives out around the springtime. And we've taken some of those same questions and we've, our cultural liaison has translated them into the languages that we serve so that we're able to provide them to families in their, their home language. And so that allows us to, you know, learn what everyone's experiences and not just the experience of a small population of our community. I will say at this time, like we have a good amount of families that have completed it, but not enough. And so now it's a conversation of kind of figuring out, like, what is another approach for us to make sure that we are getting all the voices that are representative, representative of the population that we serve. Another thing is, as far as our student identity, we uplift and highlight all of our students and the various identities that they bring to the community because those are assets. All of our students are assets. So if you were to walk through the building, any of the halls at Nicolet, you will see our students' cultures on display throughout the building. You will also see evidence of the work that is happening in the classroom. Students, students are the ones who bring life to the building. So it's so important that they see themselves when they do walk throughout the building. So these are just a couple pictures of some of the work that's on display. But every single teacher at Nicolet posts relevant student work outside of their classroom so that every single student, as they are walking the building, they can see themselves represented and they can be proud of the work that they are doing each day.
And as stated earlier, Nicolet is an avid demonstration school. And so we're very proud tonight to have two of our avid students here that are gonna be able just to share a little bit about their experience with Avid.
My name is Fraser Hayalo, and I'm in eighth grade, and this is my first year in Avid. The reason for joining Avid is so I could get ready for college. And I heard it from a friend that it would help me through my college and get a future career someday. I enjoy Avid because of the collaboration with classmates, and I am more comfortable speaking up because of it. I'm more comfortable asking for help. My favorite thing about Avid is the different strategies we use to learn. It helps manage my time. I have time to study and to have fun. Helps my organization with the binder checks we do. It also, also helps organization in other classes. I used to give up when the problem gets too hard with some other classes. But when I joined Avid, they helped me more, so I get the problem done. It's more helpful for me to get the job done.
My name is James Parham, and I, I'm in seventh grade, and I've been in Avid for two years. Avid has taught me everything isn't gonna be easy, and I can ever overcome hard things. Tutors help us and classmates also help us. Avid's helped me solve problems on my own. Because of Avid, I want to be a web leader, and I want to join honors classes. I build confidence through Avid and learn strategies to help on problems. Avid's helped me get recognition in Nicolet Middle School. I've been recognized as Student of the Month, and I've been on A honor roll, which also helps with public speaking. I, I helped on the fifth grade panel when we toured the fifth graders around the school to get them excited for sixth grade.
Great, thank you, boys.
These are some pictures taken from around our school community that showcase the efforts that we are making in pathways, recognizing student success in town hall, and other various student work that's posted around the building to highlight student success and collaboration amongst students and teachers.
And so I just want to close with this quote by Ken Williams. "What matters most is creating a school with an unrelenting focus on learning for all." And that is something that I believe we are really prioritizing at Nicolet. And I think that if you spoke to students, families, staff, they would feel the same way. I think that staff has been very receptive to the work that we are doing as well as how we've been spending our team time, focusing in on content, and just the extra collaboration that they have as far as the different spaces and, and structures that we have built this year. Thank you.
Thank you, and maybe we'll, thanks, thanks to everyone. We'll have Dr. Hussain come up just for questions, so let our guests head back to the space. Back to you Chair.
Yep, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from board members?
As always, I appreciate having our representation from our different locations come and share with us all the wonderful things they have going on. I just love the inspirational story of Mrs. Traitor. Just hearing how she came back. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
I think, you know, if that's not inspirational, I don't know what is. I, I think that's just so beautiful to hear about a student that grew up in the district and then came back to teach here. Just, it's very heartwarming. So thank you for sharing that with us. And then Nicolet Middle School, I very much love hearing about all those new things that are going on with having a student that just exited Nicolet and then now having one that just entered. I can see now the differences in all those changes that you guys made. And I just want to say thank you. I didn't get the survey. I don't know, I maybe saw it and I didn't fill it out, but I'll give you my results right now. Thank you. I, I appreciate those changes that you made. I think they really truly did make a difference. My daughter was very nervous about, you know, being new at Nicolet and just having everything. Like, I was like very impressed that her locker was like right by her, her classrooms. And I was like, oh, well, that's intentional. And I, I think that's important for transitioning to, from elementary to middle school and having you guys being very thoughtful about that and with the houses. I love that idea, and we love Mr. Kratnum, by the way. I think these ideas and just all the things we've talked about recently about the transitions between elementary to middle school and then middle school to high school and these types of approaches. And I think these are the types of things that get students to stay in our district. And I appreciate your intentionality with that. And so, yeah, I think these are all great things. Thank you, Dr. Trenteen. So that's, that's all I had to say.
Other board members?
I'll just echo what Director Worb said. My daughters knew a sixth grader at Nicolet as well, and she was extremely nervous about transitioning to a bigger school with more kids and was really excited to see how, I didn't, you know, not having experienced it before, but just to have like, oh, the sixth graders are on this floor and the seventh graders are on this one. That's a great idea. And it really helped her be able to feel like she could find everything that she needed to and not feel like she'd get lost and nervous. And we also really appreciated the lead-in to the school year, too, to have like a day for, or an afternoon where the sixth graders could go in and, and practice. She struggled so much with opening her locker, and so then she was so determined that we could not leave until she did it. And now she's a whiz. And so, yeah, no, just great changes. She feels really welcome and is excited to go to school every day. So, thank you.
Thank you.
It was lovely to see this presentation, especially like updates on our schools. And it was really lovely to hear from students themselves. I know as a past Pond and Nicolet kid myself, it was really lovely to see how the community and joy and culture came together in our schools. And I especially loved seeing the community circle and the singing from Gideon Pond. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hussain and Trenteen. Good to see you both, good to meet you. Wonderful report. And it's really reassuring based on the information that we received before you, connections with the students and the families. with the students and the families, carrying through from elementary to middle school. That's not just what, what's going to keep the students in our district, but it's going to keep the students in the school, in the classroom. And that's ultimately what I'm reading between the lines for you guys, that that's, you know, of course, relationships matter, of course, having a loving, caring community matter, and it helps. So thank you for that. Two questions, maybe three, well, one statement, I'm sorry they left. You save the best for last. Love when the students come. Absolutely love hearing, I mean, the persistence and public speaking. It's not easy to do public speech in middle school. Some adults don't even like doing it, so please. Exactly, yes. So please share with them our gratitude. They did an awesome job, they really did. Questions? Dr. Trentington, do you have your conference attendance statistics by chance?
I do not have that at hand.
And that's okay, if you wanna send it after, afterward, it would just be nice to know.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
And then I have a feeling this might be a question for Dr. Belmont. Hearing about the house model, you're, now, Nicolet is, is piloting that, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And the goal ultimately is, with the pilot, is that when successful, roll, roll over to Eagle Ridge.
Oh, I'm sorry. Eagle Ridge is also piloting it at the sixth grade level, but the hope is that with it, like, as being successful and continues to be successful, we'll be able to roll it up to seventh grade and then up to eighth grade as well.
Got it, okay, thank you for that clarification. Because I remember when we moved to the middle school model, we were unable to do a house model because of the cost. And I'm wondering how we are possible, how it's possible to do it now? Is it, I imagine in part it's due to declining enrollment. We have fewer students in the schools, and so the breakdown of the teams might be a little more manageable, but that's just kind of a wondering that I have.
Yeah, absolutely, that's a great question. I will say, we were able to get additional SWAS funding as a result of how we have been utilizing our interventionists to do a lot of the support work and to support with some of the win time, so that has really allowed for us to have additional staff to support with, with our house model at the sixth grade level.
So, yeah.
That's my understanding as well, not knowing all of the ins and outs with the, the finance realities or the historical context, that school within a school, community education, ALC funding, has provided new opportunities, and they are recent.
And, and they're obviously successful if we're, if we're considering rolling it up to the different grade levels, so, interesting. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Wonderful presentations. We really, I know I speak for all of us, we really love hearing from the schools, and especially the students, but you guys, too. And we really appreciate you taking the time to prepare the wonderful presentation and letting us know what's going on in your schools. I love the idea of the, the different grades on the different floors. That was awesome. I have a special place in my heart for teachers, because I worked with them so many years, and also for Avid, because I was an Avid tutor before I was on the school board. So I just love hearing, you know, oh, I just loved hearing from them, it's too bad they left before we really got to thank them, but you let them know. And, but, just so you know, too, I really feel, when you were talking about community and the relationships between your parents, that really warmed my heart, too, because that is so important. And to know that this district really strives and strives on that, I just didn't see that where I came from before, so I am so proud of that. And I do think that relationships like that are what build lasting memories and experience that lead to life, excuse me, life achieves, achievements and accomplishments, like what happened with the teacher that you told us about that went to Gideon Pond and that is now working there. So I feel that's really important, and I just thank you so much again for coming.
Thank you.
I have to say something. Twenty years ago, my, my oldest son was in kindergarten at Gideon Pond, as you know. And this year, my youngest son is a senior at the high school. So it's been a couple of years since I've had kids at either school, but I knew, my wife and I knew twenty years ago that Gideon Pond was a special place, and I love hearing about how it continues to be and is probably even more of a special place now, and you're continuing to build on the legacy of the staff and the students that were there previously. And I would say the same about Nicolet. My, all three of my boys had very positive experiences at Nicolet. And there are always challenges at every school. I appreciate and respect that you and your staff are listening to your, trying to respond to some of the challenges that you've seen and working to make a difference. And based on what you said tonight, it seems like you are. So, thank you to you both and to, to your staff for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, well, yes, thank you. On behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you. A lot of work went into those reports, obviously, and a lot of pride in your, your buildings, so I appreciate that. And please let the two gentlemen know that their presentation was excellent. I have had the, I've seen adults at the, that podium struggle more than they did, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Lastly, in our information section, are there any reports from board members regarding board committees, appointments, and school assignments? I'll just run through our standing committees first with legislative.
Nothing to report.
Well, it's nothing to report, very good. Policy review, Director Marisol's not able to join us tonight, either Connor or Alt, do you, do you wanna just say something?
We had a policy meeting, and we went through the policies that were assigned to us at night, and then I guess some of them we will be reviewing later on in this meeting.
Perfect, thank you. Negotiations, Director Earl?
Nothing to report.
Very good. And that leaves us, the remaining board committee, standing committee assignments, any others that would spring up? Nine one seven?
I was down with illness, so I wasn't able to attend that meeting.
No worries. Any others?
I have.
Yes, go ahead, Ed.
On, two weeks ago, October, Friday, 11th, I attended the monthly Burnsville Chamber of Commerce Policy Committee meeting. At that meeting, we had Aaron Tinklinberg and Dr. Battle presented to the members of the chamber about the upcoming tech levy vote. The presentation went quite well, and the chamber members seemed to respond quite positively to the presentation. So, that was, that was good. And then earlier today, I did read, participated in Read for the Record at Neal Elementary in Ms. Linnell's class, preschool class, which was delightful. Yes, and I'm blanking on the name of the book, but she just sent me the picture a few minutes ago. Piper Chen Sings, which I had not read before, but it was quite good. So, those are my two reports for today.
My AMSD report, we had a meeting on October 4th, our speaker was Dr. Rose Chu. She spoke on elevating teaching, which is teacher teaching, a teacher teaching outreach program. It's to recruit people of color to become teachers by creating a movement. This initiative program was funded by supporters and grants, and they asked parents, what are your struggles, or what are your, yeah, what are your struggles that you see in your students in education? What is their biggest concern? And they answered, which I was impressed by this, they said that the respect and the relationship between parents, teachers, and students. So they don't want to continue to disparage teachers or the teacher profession, but they feel like, there, this is what parents are saying, that there's no respect from Congress for parents and their students. This campaign is aid is, is, I don't know what this aid, well, anyway, it's to help rebrand the teaching profession and attract BIPOC people to this profession. The tools to do this is, they want to prepare people, they want to inspire people, they want to target high school and college students, and they need help from the communities and businesses plus parents to do this. The speaker mentioned that she heard that some stu, some parents of the students of color kind of discourage their kids from getting into the teaching profession, and they don't, but they still want their children to have a rich and fulfilling education. But you can't have both. You, you know, you have to have your students that want to also be a part of that educational experience that you want your children to achieve. And we're talking about children of color. Okay, so, she just wanted to put that out there for parents, 'cause we need this as a tool for this outreach program to work. They also said that one of the other things to, for this program is they're gonna do, one of the tools they're gonna use, or some of the tools, will be community building, opportunity, elevating careers, creative, creative teaching, legacy, legacy building, and teamwork. So they just, she just wanted teachers to just keep inspiring youth, because your current examples do help inspire, and they're, this worthwhile career that really makes a difference for our child's life and the future of our country leaders. I so agree with that. And I also read today, this morning, for Read for the Record at Ron El, Elementary, for kindergarten class, Ms. Rhonda's class, and we read the Piper Chen Sings, and it went very well. The students really liked the book, I enjoyed the book. So that's my report.
Excellent. Any other reports for tonight? Okay, thank you. Well, that concludes the information portion of our meeting tonight, so now we'll move to the business portion, starting with our consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will then be removed for separate consideration. Do any board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda tonight? All right, seeing no indication of that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt.
Second.
Seconded by Director Hume. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Okay, with our first item under business tonight, we are being asked to approve a revision to the Metcalf Middle School Purchase Agreement. Presenting tonight's recommendation will be Stacy Solvin, Executive Director, Administrative Services. Welcome, Stacy.
Evening, Chair Miller, Dr. Belmont, members of the board. This pertains to our Metcalf Middle School Purchase Agreement. Through the process, the entitlement process with the city of Eagan, the developer was informed of an additional round of approvals and the required sewer study. In addition, they have to complete a Phase II environmental study to address cleanup of the school fuel tank and potentially issues with the neighboring gas station. And as such, this may delay their timing for obtaining all approvals from the city in closing. Thus, what the recommendation coming to you tonight is, is an extension, so that they can close by July 1st of 2025 versus May of 2025. That in summary is what we're requesting tonight. So it is my recommendation that the Board of Education adopt a resolution ratifying authorization of conveyance of property by Independent School District Number 191 to Syndica LLP and execution of First Amendment to amended and restated purchase agreement in connection therewith.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as stated by Director Solvin?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester. Oh, he was there, okay. Director Connor, and we'll have a seconded by Director Hume. Any discussion on the matter? Okay. Having been moved and seconded, this resolution will require a roll call vote. So in just a second, I will ask Sarah to call the roll, and when she calls your name, please respond with either an aye, if you're in favor of the resolution, or nay, if you're opposed. Sarah, will you please make the roll call?
Director Hume?
Aye.
Director Chester?
Aye.
Director Connor?
Aye.
Director Werb?
Aye.
Chair Miller?
Aye.
And Director Alt?
Aye.
All right, very good. This resolution was declared duly passed and adopted. Next, we are being asked to adopt a resolution to approve a purchase proposal for the Sutrel Elementary School property. Once again, Stacy Solvin, Executive Director, Administration Services is presenting the recommendation.
Thank you, Chair Miller. Before I proceed with this, I do want to acknowledge Zach Mahan. He is representing M&amp;I Homes of Minneapolis St. Paul LLC. He is with us tonight. Just ask him to come in if any questions throughout this process, if you folks may have, he'll be far more able to answer those as we move forward. On September 12, 2024, the board considered an offer to purchase the above referenced facility, Sutrel Elementary. After consideration, the board did direct staff and attorneys to finalize a purchase agreement for this transaction. We came to an agreement of $3.5 million for the property. Outstanding bonds are just under $1.25 million. So it would be about $2.25 million then after our obligations are paid for net proceeds on this. The, the property, well, actually, do you wanna just give a brief description of what your, the property would look like?
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm Zach Mahan, I'm the land manager at M&amp;I Homes in Minneapolis. Right, it's a 13-acre parcel, plus or minus an acre or so, roughly. Our intention with the property is to build, it's kind of a small lot, single-family home, and then potential for some townhomes on the property as well. Kind of a mixture with the goal of blending in the property to the existing neighborhood so that people don't feel like it's just a large townhome community with these towering homes overlooking their, you know, single-level or two-level homes in that community. So we'll put the single family around the edges and then work with the city to determine what that best mixture is towards the interior of the parcel.
With that description and satisfying the direction of the board, developing a purchase agreement, it is my recommendation that the Board of Education adopt the proposed resolution to approve the purchase agreement between Independent School District 191 and M&amp;I Homes of Minneapolis St. Paul LLC.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution as put forward by Director Solvin?
So moved.
Moved by Director Werb?
Second.
Seconded by Director Hume. At this point, is there any discussion on the matter?
So, thank you for coming. Glad to, glad to meet you. Zach, clarification, is it simply townhomes that are being built, or single-family and townhomes?
Yes, the intention is to have a mixture, right? So we wanna put kind of a small lot, single-family, so detached homes, but just on a smaller lot, so not these large homes by any means. Try to match the market and what the market wants in the area. And that is going to be kind of around the edge of the, the site, really to blend in with the actual neighborhood of single-family residential that we have right now, and then to mix that in with townhomes towards the, the actual parkway, the road, I believe it's County Road 13. So we'll, we'll put the townhomes on that side and then single-family towards the actual residential.
So, thank you. Given that, I would ask that we update the recommendation to reflect the fact that it's not simply townhomes. It's, this isn't simply a transactional process, we're, we have a community that we serve, and being mindful of bringing them along with us so that they can understand if they go to our, our board packet here, I'm sure this will probably be, you know, covered in by the, the local press, making sure that we've done our due diligence and reflecting in the board materials what was just shared, because currently what's presented is 70 detached townhomes.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
So, I, I'm, I'm taking Director Alt's position at Werb, at phase, not, not denying it, just, our document states clearly that it's townhomes only, is it?
No, the, the purchase agreement does not identify the type of residence that is going in there. The, the purchase agreement is solely for the $3.5 million between the transaction for the purchase of the property. How the property is used going forward will be between the developer and the city and the different commissions in which they have to work through. As we have gone through this now a couple of times with other properties that we sold, what is initially stated on the front end is not usually what ends up once it goes through the final processes with the city and the county.
And we are at the beginning of this process, and we're hearing that we have both single-family homes and townhomes, and in the recommendation...
No, the only, this part of the recommendation by, just for transparency's sake, was requested by a director to be placed in here. This wasn't a part of the original cover sheet. This wasn't a part of the original cover sheet. So I, I, I take a little bit of concern as far as the memo and the information that's on the front end. Again, the reason why it wasn't included on the front end is because these things change over time.
And our past, our standard practice, if we refer back to Metcalf documentation at the opening presentation, as well as Diamond Head at the opening presentation, we had essentially an, an acknowledgement of this is the plan right now. We understand, of course, that there are conversations that have to happen with the city. And I think given that we know that there are single family homes intended, there are standalone townhomes intended, I think it's only fair that we include that as documentation, you know, for that breadcrumb trail of, of transparency for our community.
Again, as this will not change the overall recommendation in the purchase agreement that has been negotiated by both sides attorneys, we can always go back and we can modify the description that's in this afterwards, but there is nothing here in which should delay the, the motion or the action of the board.
No, I'm not suggesting we delay it. I'm just saying we change the recommendation to reflect what we just heard from Zach.
If I, if I may, just uh, cause I, I see where you're, I found, I located what you're describing, Director Al. I read it a little, little, little different just because of um, like Director Solvine said, just some real vague and general descriptions, um, language like preliminary plans include looking at around seventy detached townhomes. So it just seems.
Is it, is it not accurate to include standalone, single family homes since that's what Zach presented?
So you're thinking like, cause it says, it's in, are you looking at the, heading around preliminary concept?
Preliminary concept and given that we are at the preliminary concept phase, I believe we should be accurate based on what the conversation was tonight.
Again, when you're at this level or at this part of the presentation, um, stating that it should be accurate when this is going to change over the next few months as to what actually occurs in this property? I, I, I take, I, I don't see that.
It's what we're talking about tonight.
I think it's accurate based on what we know today. I think we know that it, yeah, it'll probably change. I've.
We know that.
Of course.
Okay.
Know that it will change.
Right.
Yeah.
That's my point.
But I think her point, if I may.
Please.
Is what we know today is what should be in the recommendation today while acknowledging that yes, of course, it will change probably twenty-six times between now and when they actually start digging holes.
I have, I have no problem. We can get exact wordage, verbiage from you as to what that might look like if we can. And we'll include that on, on this part.
Yes.
We'll adjust that.
And that language is not in the actual purchase agreement.
Right, right.
Which is an important detail also.
All right, so the motion in front of us is to approve a resolution, nothing else, nothing, nothing. And I'm looking through the resolution here. I don't, I'm gonna need help understanding where it says townhomes.
Not the resolution, the recommendation. It's the recommendation that is also in the board packet.
I put forward a motion to adopt the resolution. That's what we're, what's the motion on the table right now.
Right, and my request is to update the recommendation. The verbiage in the recommendation, not the resolution.
So that it lives on in perpetuity on the website.
So that we know this is where we were tonight, talking about two different housing types, not talking about changing the resolution. I think, my, in, in my opinion, um, it's our duty to be, to, to make sure that the board materials accurately reflect the knowledge at, at this time. To, thank you for restating my point, Director Hume, that perfectly summed it up.
May I just make a note, notice? In the diagram that was provided at the end of the recommendation, in red and in blue, it does call out towns, which would be townhomes and SF, which would mean single family.
And I can't see it in my.
In the di- in the diagram.
In the diagram, yeah.
Okay, so, um, I understand what you're requesting. I'm not sold that that's a necessity for a alteration of the, of the statement tonight because the recommend, the, the, the requested um, motion is to adopt the resolution. The recommendation is simply supporting documentation around what the resolu- uh, leading to the, the resolution. I don't know that the recommendation, this is a point of um, order, I guess. I don't know, I mean, I don't really, I don't know that we have to do anything other than to just say, sure, scratch it and do it because.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. So just add, um, I would suggest then Stacy that down at the bottom where we added preliminary concept, below is the concept drawing that the developer provided to the city of Virchell last week, preliminary plans, including looking, looking at about seventy detached townhomes around the four hundred thousand dollar price point, to simply put something to the, the nature of a, um, I would even open it up to more ambiguous and that leaves you plenty of room, just development to.
Townhomes and single family homes.
Single house.
Look, uh, preliminary, it already says preliminary plan, so that's sufficient to just scratch that and repost it as a, you know, a mixture, a potential mixture of townhomes and single family homes.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'm sorry, Zach, is that right?
Yep.
So Zach, I appreciate you being here in, in the interest of, I mean, kind of addition to what Director Al was referring to. Have you, have you guys done something like this, developed the land that was previously owned by a school district or a community or?
Abs- yeah, absolutely. So we will redevelop multiple different sites. I mean, the most recent one I can think of is a, a church um, property that would be somewhat similar in terms of demolition and, and redevelopment.
Schools, as you made, you were here earlier, so you listened to the, the presentation about Gideon Pond and schools hold a lot of pride with the local, especially very locally around them. And um, right or wrong, especially when they're vacated, uh, and that, like, the local community sees that as a park of, that it's very handy for them to use. I don't think anybody denies that progress needs to occur, but uh, it would be our request and outside the terms of the contract and the resolution, just that your, your organization understands that situation with the community and tries, do its best to, to honor that with the locals or the local uh, members of our community around there. So as you develop the property, I'm sure you will. I'm just making that a, a public request. Thank you. Any other? Okay. All right, having moved and seconded, this resolution will require a roll call vote. So in just a second, I will ask Sarah to call the roll. And when she calls your name, please respond with either aye if you're in favor or a resolution or nay if you're opposed. Sarah?
I'll start on this side. Director Al?
Aye.
Director Werb?
Aye.
Chair Miller?
Aye.
Director Connor?
Aye.
Director Chester?
Aye.
And Director Hume?
Aye.
This resolution there is, therefore is declared duly passed and adopted. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you again Zach for spending your evening with us.
Absolutely.
Look forward to partnership with you.
Very excited to work with you guys. Yes, I think it's gonna be great.
Thanks.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
All right, um, the final item on our agenda is to, to move to a work session for a board discussion about uses of excess funds from the sale of the Diamond Head Outlet property, the future sales of Metcalf's, well, Middle School and Sutrel Elementary. Um, I'm gonna skip right into that if you guys are okay, cause I don't anticipate this being a very lengthy conversation, so instead of breaking. I'd like to start this evening's discussion by asking our team to pull up the presentation that has some data that I asked Administration to pull together for this evening's work sessions. And um, you know, this, this is a work session, so I'm just gonna open it up, a little on the formality, but I do want to preface this by just indicating the attention tonight, probably a bit overdue since we've gone through a couple of uh, processes of, of sale here, is to get a temperature in this status about these funds. So I asked for information on the funds because we can't really discuss it much if we don't understand it and it's there also for the community's understanding of what's, what's coming in. I, I, I would prefer this is not a conversation revisiting the, the exact properties or why we sold them or any, you know, what, you know, anything specific about them, but more about the fact that we have these monies coming in and long-term, what would we like to try to see done? And I really anticipate more of a large percentage outcome, not like this dollar goes there or that, you know, project or something like that. So, um, having said that, uh, we have the presentation. Um, I, um, we'll just walk through it real quick. The first slide is a breakdown, we can return that, uh, back to that, but then we did provide a slide around the type of fund balances that are available out there, um, just to remind ourselves and share with the community that might be reviewing this. And with that, I will open it up for conversation. And I don't know, do we, I mean, do we need to like take time to agree on what the possible answers here are or just talk about expectations or aspirations or?
I would, I would think based on all the, the work that we've done thus far, we would want to commit the funds to board control. And with that needing to specify generally, not in detail, but generally for what purpose.
So when you say commit to, um, are, are you mean putting them into a committed, an actual committed fund balance?
In which the money that, that is committed would only be spent with board permission. It's not that it would land in the general fund and could just be spent however, um, staff might wish. Once it's committed, then, you know, there's a formal conversation around this is, here's one ask for how to use that, those committed funds, whether it's, you know, short term or long term, right? At, at, at a distance from now.
Can, can whoever's running this run back to the, I just, I, one thing I think we should probably, for the benefit of anybody reviewing this, just to be very clear, um, we, you know, you sell a piece of property, uh, if you saw a developer here tonight, we've had multiple, different developers we're working with, um, just as if you're selling your home, you're handed a check for the amount of the value that we agreed upon. We are required by law to sell, uh, to pay off any outstanding bonds, i.e. mortgage on that property, um, which that is included in this calculation and the net proceeds. Just, and, and again, a nod of thanks to our local um, representation, um, who went to bat for us at the legislature. We needed a special exemption to have this conversation tonight because by law in the state of Minnesota, those, the rest of those proceeds need to go pay off other bonds and mortgages around the district. But we were able to free those up to be utilized for purposes of the district, so just to level set again for everybody. All right, back to the conversation.
Well, thank you, I was gonna do that too.
Yeah, so Director Al.
Thank you, our legislators and then, and then also agreeing that because of that legislative exemption, this makes sense, what Director Al was recommending.
Yep.
I would tend to agree. I think, um, this is a one-time influx of money and while I know it would be put to good use if it was in the unassigned fund balance, it's also an opportunity for us to make long-term investments in the district. And that's what I think we should be considering when, when deciding how we're gonna spend this eight million dollars over the course of however many years.
Any other thought, I mean, well, that's step one of the conversation, so is any other thoughts on that?
So you're saying that we can put it aside in a special bucket?
Right, it's another, it's another fund.
Okay.
That we control.
Got it.
I'm, I'm gaining agreement from you?
Yes, yes, I agree.
Director Connor?
I mean, if that's fine, but I, I, I guess the way it's always been is if it went into the unassigned funds, if there's a proposal to use it, it always goes by the board anyway, right?
No, if it went into the unassigned, it could be, or a portion of it did, it could in theory by, by this administration or future administrations be used to say, fund, um, you know, programming, teacher roles, et cetera, that then would have a cliff on them because they're not being funded by our normal funding mechanisms, you know, through the state and tax and the local community tax rules. This is, let's, in one way of looking at it, this is no different than COVID dollars, for instance, which we didn't, we didn't lock those up, but uh, you know.
They had very specific.
They had very specific requirements on them to begin with.
Right.
But we wouldn't want, um, these to be used to overinflate our economic position in the business. That's what we discussed, is saying that we wouldn't want to do that. So that down the road, we could reach a point where we can no longer afford to have those programs. We have to cut them because they're not part of our normal funding balance.
So it'd be like a temporary restricted bucket?
That's not to say that these couldn't be used for something of that nature if we decide that we want to, you know, expand something over a period of time or something, but that would be a board dis- discussion and decision. That's all that's being said.
And to Director Hume's point, the long-term vision of the use of this nest egg is, um, you know, that we're, that, with a lot of uh, pain and sweat and tears, right? We, it's our duty to make sure that, that this money is set aside and, and used intentionally and deliberately.
Once we get it.
Once we get it, yes, yes.
Yeah, I mean, it could be a theory that in ten years from now, you know, this money is sitting there for development purposes in a, uh, future political environment, funding to schools has been drastically reduced and our, um, our, um, balance has become, and that, you know, a one-time influx might come out of there from the, a future board. That's all possible, but it would be the board's decision to make that move is, is what we're saying.
Right, right.
Are there?
Board's decision, but based on recommendations from.
Yeah, of course, of course.
Yes.
It's not suggesting we're gonna always know exactly the best way to spend this money, so. All right, so I think that's step one is we've, we've, we have a, and I'm in agreement with that, we have an agreement that this should be moved to committed funds as upon receipt. With the, and we can structure the, um, the mechanism of that later on, but it would at minimum need a board agreement for, for, for usage. Now, can we talk a little bit about, um, any sort of wishes around what that might mean? Or maybe that's not even necessary at this time?
I'd be happy to kick us off. I, um, have given this a lot of thought. And I think that given that we have, um, remaining proceeds from two schools that are brick and mortar, in my opinion, um, I would prefer to keep that brick and mortar money dedicated to facilities. Diamond Head on, the, the Outlets, on the other hand, I could be persuaded perhaps not, because we do also have programming needs and that was part of the exemption. So if we simply designated the funds from the deck Outlets for pathways programming because that is who we are, um, I don't know that we could necessarily specify not staffing, but equipment, curriculum, you know, the stuff of the pathways. That might be a good alternate use if the board chose not to dedicate all of the funds to facilities.
And I, I'm a little, um, concerned about making just a D mark between brick and mortar or whatever and, um, programming because I, and I think, so in, in, in terms of definition, I think we should walk through that a little bit. You know, uh, you know, whatever it might be, um, very clear up, you know, that would be an expansion to the high school or something like that, you know? But what about, um, what about, you know, a new round of three D printers and, you know, throughout the district or something? Is that, you know, is that brick and mortar or, I mean, or is that programming, you know?
That's not brick and mortar. I mean, in my, right, in my opinion, brick, yeah.
Actual brick and mortar.
I would say actual, you know, changing to the site, whether it's, um, an expansion, it could be safety and security, it could be anything, any kind of construction to the site or enhancement within the site. Anything that's not locked down, I wouldn't tend to consider facilities. I would consider that. And, and I will defer on how to define it, but, you know, the, the stuff in the schools that fuels learning would be programmatic, in my opinion.
I would say I largely agree with you. My hesitancy is, I don't know that I want to lock us into X dollars for this and Y dollars for that. Um, I, I'd feel more comfortable if we said our focus or our priority is on programming and on brick and mortar, however we want to phrase it. Cause if there is a recommendation that comes forward that is more than nine hundred thousand dollars for programming, I wouldn't want us to say, well, we're not gonna. well, we're not going to do it because we decided in fall of 2024, we're only going to use that much money for programming. So I'd rather give us, give future us flexibility for whatever recommendations may come our way.
And I think this is a healthy conversation. Just to be very clear, the only thing we're giving out of direction here today is these dollars are going into a committed fund. Beyond that, it's sort of a getting a flavor for this current board's idea of what spending out of that would mean. Now, anything could be brought forward later on and the board could discuss that and, and debate it at that time.
We definitely have brick and mortar needs, so I would definitely be interested in hearing some of that.
Well, I would, I would caveat that this would be to offset funding that isn't available elsewhere.
Correct, yep.
You know, so like if there are other grants out there, if there are other funding sources, that's what you, what you get for it. But if there's like, oh, because of inflation, it's now X amount, a little bit more, that's where I think this could come into play.
And if there was something brick and mortar we wanted to do where we could use this investment or have to do a bond referendum of some sort, I think we'd want to start with this, for sure.
Director Solvain, you have a.
Couple of points of clarification. One, what I'm hearing is, is that you would like to commit funds for security and facility upgrades is pretty much what you're, you're looking for, is that you're trying to commit a certain amount of money. I'm also kind of hearing weeds within this conversation, other type of pathways or programming type of stuff. When I brought the proposal to you previously, it wasn't dependent upon this money. You have, you have unassigned funds that will cover any recommendation that I brought forward, so you don't necessarily need to worry about carving anything out here. If you would like to say all of your open facilities and grounds in which you have sold or in the process of selling, if you would like to commit all of those to security and facility upgrades, we'll just take whatever those net proceeds are and set it aside. Whenever we have a project or a need that comes forward that fits that parameter, then we will come to you, ask that you uncommit those funds for a certain dollar amount to address the project that we're bringing forward. So you don't have to worry about tying it all up right now as far as this, that, and/or.
Yeah, to be clear, I don't, I did not feel like we said that it was committed for something or anything. While, the first thing we're just saying for certain is we want the funds to not move into the general fund, we want them to move into a committed fund that requires board approval to exit from. Going beyond that, we're just talking a little bit about what would be our preferred use of those funds. We could possibly be swayed to something else, given the circumstances, again, whenever they occur, but that, that was just, it was temperature of what we would use those funds potentially for.
You do have to state a purpose as to what they're being committed for.
You can't just commit them to, for.
It needs to have a purpose.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's why I'm saying.
I didn't realize that, okay.
That's why I'm saying. And it's a pretty generic, it's your security or facility.
Well, how generic can it be?
Pretty, that, I think that's pretty generic.
Well, but, but programming, but like, like pathways, like would we call out pathways specifically, you know, because we'd want to not just lock ourselves into.
It would be, it would be too separate. My understanding is that if it's, if it's programming, we would want to spell it out separately because programming is different than, than brick and mortar facilities.
So is that two committed funds?
Well, it's just two committed purposes. It's, I mean, yeah, yeah.
I mean, like in order to being, saying what's the general purpose.
Right.
We want to make sure we're calling out.
Right. And MSBA had suggested that there be, you know, if, if it's not all going to be one purpose, likely best to have things spelled out separately.
So two committed.
Could be two, two committed, yeah, yeah. If, if, if we didn't want to do all safety and security. If we wanted to do programming, we should cut that out separately.
But that would have cut out a specific dollar amount to make a specific bucket.
And at the same time, it's board action. So if future us, to your point, Scott, says, I don't know what they were thinking with, you know, committing this to programming.
Board action that is done can also be undone.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
And, and there also is another level, okay? You have the ability to commit, which could be to your safety and security, and we also have the other policy that allows me to take money from unassigned and put it into assigned, and that can be delegated to my position. So if you're wanting, moving forward to say, you know, if we have pathway needs that need to be addressed, you know, notify the board that you are moving, which I would have to do, notify you that we are moving a certain amount from unassigned to assigned to address that need.
I would be of the favor to put it in committed funds, but as such at a highest generic level that we legally can get to do, basically.
For security purposes?
Well, that seems still even binding to me.
Well, the only money we have right now is the $900,000.
Yep.
Right.
Well, again, this is, this is all about, this is all under the assumption we're going to receive, receive the.
Go back to the definitions thing of the different buckets.
Could I ask a quick question? Because I'm new to this conversation, but what is the advantage of choosing the committed funds versus the unassigned and then overseeing the budget process annually?
It's a formal, it's a formal approval process, separate from budget.
Okay. So I don't know if we need to clarify, you know, we have a list of choices that we could title as the committed for, I mean, I didn't anticipate this to be a one-and-done conversation, frankly. I just wanted to start the conversation. So maybe at a future workshop, we can revisit this and have a little bit more clarification, Stacy, about what our choices for committed funds would be.
Yes, I can bring something back. You're not necessarily looking for security, you're hoping for something even as, as high level as.
Student success.
That is very vague.
It's very vague. It fits brick and mortar in order for the students to be successful. We need to add on this part of the building.
We might say something along the line of capital expenses for student success. You could say, I, I mean, it's, because it is an operation, you're not.
In a classic finance, it's CapEx versus operating expenses.
Right.
We want credit towards this, but I don't know how you classify that in your, in your world, so if we could have some choices, we would.
Tyler and I will explore some, some options as far as terminology and what you might be able to use.
And I think the other thing to think about, which hasn't been discussed for probably a couple of years, but, you know, not knowing what our current or possible future needs are, let's say suddenly enrollment grows, right, and we have to expand one of our middle schools. That could be another possible use.
Sure.
Right, for student success.
Okay, I think we probably have trolled this ground enough for tonight. That was my intention, was to start this conversation, so. All right, so the time now is 8:47 PM, and having no further agenda items, I'm now going to call to adjourn this meeting of the Board of Education.